To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our invocation is going to be led by Pastor Tim Compton of Voice Tech Chapel. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have together here. We thank you for a land that affords us the freedoms and the opportunities to be able to discuss business and to be able to discuss areas that are of our concern. And we just thank you and give you such a free land that we can function in. We pray for these individuals tonight as they do make these decisions, that you will give them wisdom, discernment, and understanding. And I pray that you will get the glory in the end. Thank you again for Jesus Christ and what he means to us and the fact that he can deserve to die for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Roll call.
Here. Fire is here. 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 All set.
Here.
Do you motion to accept the January 7th, 2020 minutes from the regular meetings? Second. Also need a motion to accept the minutes from the January 13th, 2020 public hearing.
Second.
All right. This is the time that we grant permission for the listeners to speak. We have four speakers already on the agenda tonight, and the first one is Ali Terrell of Serveline.
Can you hear me all right?
Please state your name and address.
It's Ali Terrell. I'm with Serveline, and we're located in Chattanooga, Tennessee.
I'm Jerry Harstein, also Chattanooga, Tennessee, originally from Akron, Kent. So I'm sort of back home a bit. I'd like to give just a brief introduction to Ali and go through his presentation that's been handed out, trying to allow some questions. But the program that we put together is to work with the utility and the citizens of the city. We started this program about seven years ago, went around to utilities around the country asking what needs and what problems they're facing. And it came back repeatedly that dealing with individuals' leaks is a problem against 62 percent of marriages have a problem with $500 emergency. How do they deal with the leak when it comes? And so, a lot of the problems that we've had to address, and we got feedback from the utilities, is help us with the leaks, help our customers to deal with the leaks. It's a problem for us first, even when we help them with the leak. The problem is, they didn't get the whole thing paid for, so they still have the problem. So leaks happen. Most managers will tell you it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when you'll have the leak, and how does that get addressed? So based on the feedback we got around the country, we put a program together. We've been doing this throughout the country, throughout Ohio. And the reality of it is, across the country, the participation rate by homeowners is 97 percent. Heckle Water is in southern Ohio, and we were just down at Scioto, and he came over to the Scioto to help us fix the freezing days. He said, "I just want people to see how well it works." Ali says, "Well, I'm going up to northern Ohio." He says, "I'll come," because, no, that's a long drive, you don't need to do that. But we bring that up because you can talk to any users around the country, and they will tell you the same thing. Why isn't everybody on this program? It's saved our citizens so much, it's benefited them, and it's helped the utility as well. So without any more discussion, I'll let Ali talk to you through the presentation.
So on page seven here, it's just kind of a breakdown of Serveline. A little minute. But the way Serveline is set up is we have three different components. The first component is the leak adjustment portion. The second and third component are the water line protection and the sewer line protection. So I'm going to talk about the leak adjustment portion separate from the line protections, just so there isn't any confusion. But if you all have any questions, feel free to interrupt. But so on the next page here, page eight, is the leak adjustment protection. So the way that this works is you all would choose a limit of coverage, $500, $1,000, probably $2,500. Your all's pricing is also in the folder with the proposals, so it's about $1.10 to $1.55 is the variance in the pricing there for the coverages. So you, as a utility, choose the limit of coverage you want to provide for every single customer. And what this covers is, the customer will pay their average water bill, and anything above that absolute limit of coverage is what we'll cover. So an example of how all this works is, we put together a brochure, informational educational material that you all would send out with your water utility bills. And on there, we have a phone number that we create specific for your utility. We try to use a local number if there is one available. We handle all the customer service and claims when it comes to water leaks. So a customer would call us if they have a water leak, they say, "Hey, I got a high bill, I had such and such happen, and now I have a leak." So we ask a few questions as far as, you know, have you gotten this taken care of? Have you known how to leak? That kind of thing. Then we notify the utility. The utility will let the customers know what their average bill is, and then we send a check directly to the utility, anything above that, up to the limit of coverage. With this, this is an opt-out program, which I know sometimes people think that's a little weird, but the reason for that is, before we started Serveline, we spoke to about 40 utilities, and that was something that they were all adamant about, because currently you all have a leak adjustment program, and every single one of your customers has already enrolled into that. So this is coming in to basically enhance the utility. But the customer has the option to opt-out at any point in time. We sent out the educational materials, or we sent them to you all to send out, about a month or two prior to the launch of the program. So then the customer can opt-out even before it goes onto their bill. They can opt-out at any point in time after it has launched. And one benefit we have to the customer is, let's say, eight months down the road after you launch the program, they just now realize they had this in their bill, they didn't want to pay for it. We will reimburse the customer up to the first 12 months after launching. There's no deductible, and there's no cost to the utility for this program. And as Jerry was saying, we have a 97 percent participation rate across the country for the leak adjustment program. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions or anything to address.
Does anybody have any questions?
If you have this number, 97 percent of the people there will participate. What percentage of those historically would use the service to file a claim?
Well, that varies around the country. For instance, you've got parts of the country that have meters at different places, and depending, in some areas, like in, there's an area that we're just in, Scioto, they have a lot of leaks, for instance. We have one, I'll give an example, in Kingston, Tennessee, 3,000-member utility. Their leak adjustment was costing them $90,000 a year. So some are a lot less. You could be in the next county over, and it's a whole lot different number. So we tailor it for each utility. So we use your number to figure out where you need to be. And somebody that's got $90,000 a year is probably paying more than someone who...
Sure. Do you have a projected number that you anticipate here?
I don't have that number in front of me. Okay, we can look at that. We use some of your numbers. So I don't know if you have to know what the usage here. Look, so we don't have the numbers? Okay, so in this case, we don't have a history. So what we do is take the national average, that's how we arrive at the cost. And so, the way this program works is that every year, we could raise the rate. You know, we could look at the history, if their usage was up, we have the ability to raise the rate. For seven years, we've never raised the rate, but we've lowered three rates. And it's always with the standard, because you don't know what their numbers are until you use it. So we've gone back and lowered several. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, I'm not trying to avoid it, I don't know how to...
Mike's back, yeah?
Mike, does that number, do you have any idea of what our projected usage would be of the program?
What our projected usage is, I mean, it varies. I've got, where I live, I have this program. I've had it for a year and a half, I've never used it, I've had a leak. But we've got probably an average of five to six customers, well, probably closer to 10 customers per month, who has a leak where their bill's double of what they're normally assuming is. Where normally, it's the toilet. The toilet, you go away, you flush your toilet, it runs for a day or two, and a lot of water will go through the toilet, or the water line, very internal water. But yeah, it's probably about 10, 715 a month.
Mr. President? If I can add, when we had somebody on Monday in the office that installed a washing machine and hopes, I think they came in, Mike can correct me, about $300 bill. And our bill was $80. This would cover something like that. So back when water was a lot less expensive here, since we built a new water plant, the rates have gone up dramatically. So the hard thing for us in the office is, you know, and I've had this happen at home, you know, it doesn't take long for a toilet to run, to get up into $200 or $300, it goes pretty quickly. So this is what we're trying to do, people that normally get that $15 bill and, you know, just suddenly can't come up with $300, you know. So that's, and for a reasonable cost, we wanted to propose this to you to at least help those folks out, I think a dollar or so a month. And so, I would just kind of estimate that our, from the calls we get during the year, we're probably, you know, 40,000, 50,000 or more in leaks, just anecdotally. I don't keep track exactly, but we've had people with $5,000 bills plus, you know.
Yeah, it usually takes one leak and it pays off the entire life of the program.
Is there a minimum participation number that you need to...
No, and that's a good question, because the beauty of it is, if no one in the community signs up, everybody has the option, everybody said, "I don't want it," that's fine. You still can offer it, they can sign on later, there's no issue there. The point of it is, you're offering it. So whatever money you're spending right now, you're spending, I think, 50 percent roughly for the leak adjustment. So whatever that money is, you're paying about half of the bill, and the resident's paying the other half. We pay the whole thing. And the beauty of it is, you save that money right up front. If everybody says, "We don't want it," that's their choice. They're responsible, and legally, they're responsible anyway. And in state of Tennessee, the control office says, "You need to get out of that business." We have enough to do with fixing our infrastructure and other things. The other thing about this program that's beneficial is, we've been everywhere in the country, and I've yet to run into a staff that doesn't have more than they can do. They're over, you know, they've just got a lot of work to do every day. This removes some of that work so they can focus on other things, because we handle all those calls, and Mike, I'm sure, when somebody calls and has a leak, it's not, "Oh, by the way, I have a leak." It's an important aspect, and it takes many calls, a lot of time. So it's an important thing when somebody doesn't have their water. So all that we handle is like the back office for the city.
I've got a question. Jerry, can you talk, can somebody here tonight who is watching, has a commercial business, how does, you talked about residential, how does this also work for commercial?
If you want to answer that.
As far as for commercial, we'll cover anything that's like if their meter size is two inches or less. But they, it's the same thing, their rates are just a little higher, but it's also included, the rates for the commercial are in there as well. And this covers one leak every 12 months, so.
We're going to be discussing this Thursday.
And we're available if you have questions any time.
Yeah, we're going to look over all this, because you gave us quite a bit of information here, and we may, we'll probably hear some questions.
Are you signing everybody up for it and giving them the option to get out? Correct. And the reason for that, this again, as I mentioned, every utility we've been to said that's the only way we can do it. And the reason is, for instance, you have a leak adjustment program now, that's two months through. Everybody in the community's on it, but you only pay half of that bill. And I don't know all the, I don't remember all the circumstances for that, but everybody's on the program. They said, "If we don't cover it for everybody initially and allow..." They don't have a choice to be on it, they're on it. But in our program now, they have, they get the full payment if there's a leak, and they have the option if they don't want to be on it. So that's the way it's set up, is to first make sure nobody falls through the crack, I'm missing it or not, so that they're still covered, and they're covered more than they were before. And if they choose not to be on it, at any time, they can get out. They can get back in, but they can also shut out. So does that answer the question?
Yes.
I have a question. Why, several questions. How you make your living, and does this increase our water bills?
It doesn't, the way it's offered, it's your choice. You would pay for it, yes ma'am.
Okay, we would pay extra on our water.
If you wanted it. If you don't want it, you don't pay any extra.
I have a thing that the city offered or sent out information on, that we pay $5.250 a month for our water line that comes into the house. That was another opt-out situation as well.
No, that's an opt-in situation.
Opt-in, yeah, right, right. The other thing I was...
The reason that an opt-in works there is that there was no program for that. So you get a choice if you want it. Here, you already have a program, so we've got to make sure we support that, so nobody gets left out.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
The other question I had was, oh, you're using the example of a leak in the toilet. That's a, that's a problem with the person's toilet, that's not a leak somewhere, is it? Would that really cover it?
It's still covered. It's covered. The way we look at it is this way, if the water comes through the meter and there's a leak and it gets fixed, it's an occurrence. We cover it. You're having to pay for it, we cover it.
So if my water bill is $300 and it's normally $80?
You pay $80, we pay the remainder. And a check goes directly to the utility.
Yes.
We'll be discussing this on Thursday. Anybody has any detailed questions?
Yeah.
They'll be behind the...
I'm going to run through the line check, if that's okay?
There we go.
I'm so hungry.
Any council members, anyone else? Okay, thanks for coming and giving us that presentation.
Thank you all. We're still mourning over the Buckeyes, though. And I got to share this, I'm so part of Ohio, I mean, I'm so part of Ohio, my cousin is a doctor for the Browns, and she, she is the doctor for sleep disorder. So I think she really does her job really well, because the Browns were asleep half a night.
Next on the agenda is Larry Schmidt, who is running for county commissioner.
Hi, I'm Larry Schmidt. Excuse me, I got a cold. I live at 115 Hill Press Drive. I'm running for county commissioner, old wrestle lot, PIA, is not running this time. I was born and raised, lived my whole life here in Crawford County. I'm 1973 graduate of Cornell Crawford. My wife Cheryl and I have been married 39 years. We're from Galleon, and we've lived in Ucires for the last 15 years. I have, for 42 years, I've been in business in Galleon and Ucires. Our 68-year-old business here in town, I've managed for the last 29 years, you know. I'm a Christian, conservative, capable, hardworking, and honest. I believe in sustainable growth can be achieved through economic development, a trained workforce, and affordable housing. As a business owner, I recognize the economic impact of agriculture on our local economy. I know I can work with the existing commissioners, and the cities, the villages, the townships, and for 2020, I'm focused on the future. That's it? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Next speaker is Jeff Price, who's also running for county commissioner, but it's for a distant township, I see.
I'm Jeff Price. A lot of you recognize me, if some don't. We're all gathered here tonight to speak our minds and to find out what's going on. And I mean, when the county has business, most of the time, it's not discussable like this. And I believe we need more transparency in our county government, because county business is everybody's business. My wife Tracy and my son sat there with me tonight, and I look at things a lot like Larry, lots of things need to change in the community, we need to maintain our young youth. As the younger generation moves out, we need, we're losing tax base, which is services that all these, everything is provided through taxes, the services we provide. And we need to maintain that with a younger generation, younger working force. And I guess that's pretty much all I have to say. I live at 1019 Reed Street. If you have any questions, I have a Facebook account, my phone number's on there, we can get together, have a coffee, talk, because I want to be available to everybody at any time. And I believe that's another issue with the county, is a lot of times their meetings are 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning, which makes it hard for most of the general public to get to.
Next on the agenda, we have a state senate candidate by the name of Melissa Akison.
Is this thing on?
It's recording on the...
Oh, good deal, okay. Hi, folks, I'm Melissa Akison. I am a senate candidate for District 26. This is a seven-county race. I am a constitutional conservative Republican. Crawford County happens to fall within the scope. It's Crawford County, Marion County, Morro County, Union County, Sandusky, Wyandotte, and Seneca Counties. So this is a seven-county race. But I'm not here to talk about my particular race, you can certainly follow me on Facebook, I have a very active account. It's Melissa Akison, A-C-K-I-S-O-N. I answer questions and field questions all day long. It could be anything about education, or it might be about the Second Amendment, but speaking of, that's really why I'm here tonight. In addition to being a mom of four sons, and an activist, and business owner, I'm heavily involved with the initiatives right now as it relates to combating Mike DeWine's newest bill, which is called Ohio Strong. And I'll tell you right now, there's nothing strong about Ohio Strong, especially if you have an interest to protect your constitutional rights, okay? So I'm going to do the best that I can to break this down and lay terms to make it very easy to understand, and then to have the tools to give to you so that you can actually do something. I'd imagine some of you are probably here this evening, you've probably heard that I would be here talking about Senate Bill 221, or Ohio Strong. And if not, this is a good opportunity for you to learn if you're a staunch conservative, a Republican, or frankly, even if you're a Democrat, but you appreciate the due process that is involved with constitutional protections. So the first thing I want to tell you about Senate Bill 221, that is dubbed the Ohio Strong Bill, is that it is a direct infringement on the Second Amendment. So if you are someone who appreciates due process, and you appreciate a process that is guilty before innocent, where you have an opportunity to be proven of such, this is not a bill that you're going to support. Essentially, this bill was drafted by the governor in response to the shooting that happened in Dayton, Ohio, okay? So what the politicians have done in Ohio's General Assembly, or down at the State House, is they've said, "Tell you what, we've got a problem with gun violence, this is what we're going to introduce to resolve those issues." So right now, the way that things would be with this bill is if I were to leave here tonight, and I were to make the decision that one of you is a [inaudible], or you may have some kind of a mental instability that I'm sensing, or I feel uncomfortable with you, there will now be specific judges set up that normally handle administrative issues to look at each case and determine if you are a threat and if your guns can be seized. So it's truly guilty before proven innocent, and your guns can absolutely be taken from you. My issue with that in terms of the due process is, what happens if it's somebody that I'm targeting politically? What if it is an ex-spouse? What if it's somebody that I dislike and I want to have their guns taken from them? You will then be responsible for defending yourself in a court of law to get your guns back. That's not the way that any of this should be working. The other piece of this is there will be what's considered a permission slip. So if I want to do a private gun sale, and the person who purchases from me does not have this new government permission slip, and then a crime is committed later on down the road, I'm going to be responsible for that as the seller of that firearm. And we already have checks and balances in place right now that more than take care of any private gun sales, okay? What you can do to combat what's happening, this is a direct infringement on Second Amendment rights. And what we are equipping people to do within their community is we are training them and providing them, we've already done the work for you, with a resolution that you can present to your county commissioners to make Ucires a sanctuary city, not abiding by what the governor's gun confiscation laws are going to be. So this isn't a situation where you have to just throw your hands up and go, "Gee whiz, hope these politicians do the right thing." Absolutely not. When you leave here today, you will work with your commissioners, you will set up a meeting, you will present this resolution, and as we have already been able to do in four other counties, this can become a sanctuary city or sanctuary county where these type of lawless, unconstitutional bills do not apply to you. Now, here's the deal with the resolution. Some people say, "Well, Melissa, you just have to train people to vote for the right candidate. You're a constitutional conservative. All you need to do is tell people to vote for you and get you in the General Assembly." No! You can do something about it right now. While, yes, I do want you to vote for me, and I want you to support for a machine, you know, give me the support that I can go down there and defend you, I want you to use your voices, I want you to mobilize and use your elected officials that have been put in place, and you let them know that you want this resolution put through. Ohio stands united, is almost 60,000 strong, and we've only been going on now for about a month. So that lets you know that the leverage we have, the social media presence we have, my social media presence, I have very strong access to get on local news whenever I need to, I can get to the local papers whenever I need to. People are watching this play out, all right? So what we will do, if your commissioners decide to push back too hard, or you have a mayor who decides to veto this and ignores the voices of the people, we can pressure them publicly to let everyone know they do not deserve your vote next time around, all right? They are not kingmakers, they aren't the kings of Ucires or Crawford County. They have to listen to what the people want from them. So that's what this resolution process can do. In addition to this, I want you all to get involved with Ohio Gun Owners Association. They are the strongest uncompromising lobbying firm in downtown Columbus that will not endorse candidates, they won't get behind people, they will truly just fight to make sure that the Second Amendment is not compromised as a result of politicians bowing down to pressures from the liberal media and from others who believe it's the Second Amendment when we all know that we have a godless issue in this country, we have a parental issue in this country, we have a non-accountability issue in this country. And let me give you some facts. I don't know what's so funny. Let me give you some facts. More people are killed in this country by hands, feet, and fists than they are by firearms. You start putting these things in place, what's the resolution if someone believes you have a mental disturbance? Do they tie up your hands and feet? These types of responses... These types of responses are emotional, and they don't make any sense. They're not going to curb acts of violence. They're not going to stop a mass shooter from getting a gun. The people who do these types of things are criminals, and they're not thinking about breaking the law or not if their intention is to go into a room and kill a bunch of people. So I will tell you today that I'm going to give all of you the resolution that we've been able to pass in other counties. You make sure that you work with your local commissioners and that you work with your mayor, and that you end up getting this resolution put through. Any questions? Wonderful. Thank you for having me tonight.
I do have one question. I believe the version that you're reading is the original version, not the totally watered-down Ohio Strong version now. I believe Mike DeWine's taken a lot of the issues that you were mentioning out of it, or that you have the most recent version that you're quoting.
I do have the most recent version. Yeah, so here is the... One of the scariest things about Senate Bill 221, and I'm going to read it exactly, and this is fresh just from today with the bill at its current form. Senate Bill 221 is a universal gun registry scheme, which they are trying to disguise under the label Seller's Protection Certificate. What it does is create a centralized system where lawful citizens are de facto forced into obtaining a seller's protection certificate from the government as a condition of buying a firearm. When the citizen gets this certificate, their information is then put through the federal NCIC database to be tracked and traced for future reference. And if a gun owner sells a firearm to someone who doesn't possess this government permission slip, and that firearm is used in a crime at any time down the road, the original seller will face felony charges. That's because the DeWine-Houstead Gun Control Bill reclassifies a reckless sale as a negligent sale, which would include selling a firearm to someone who does not possess one of those optional seller protection certificates. Simply put, this is Bloomberg's universal gun registration, plain and simple. The second major prong of their gun control bill is a repackaged version of the red flag gun confiscation, which they're now dubbing and calling a pink slip expansion. One of this great country's founding principles is the idea that we are innocent until proven guilty to a jury in a court of law. Red flag gun confiscation destroys that concept by empowering judges to declare you guilty based on the evidence of personal enemies before you've been charged with any crime, forcing you to then prove your innocence later. But after watching the outright beating that the Ohio gun owners gave to former Governor Kasich and the issue in 2018, Governor DeWine in Houston are desperately trying to camouflage their efforts. They're claiming that they're merely trying to expand Ohio's existing pink slip laws that allows gun owners to lose their firearms after having been adjudicated mentally defective in a court of law. But in reality, the DeWine-Houstead Gun Control Bill empowers lowly probate judges who ordinarily handle deeds and civil records to imprison gun owners based on one-sided facts and mere accusations of alcohol or drug abuse. You are then forced into an arbitrary mental testing program, and if you fail the testing, you will lose your firearms for life, get imprisoned for involuntary treatment without ever being convicted of a crime. That's the crime.
Okay. I do have to say that seems like more opinion than fact on the current one I would have liked to have read through. I do also have to say that the citizen certificate thing is kind of like a background check to make sure you aren't selling to a felon and making that person be liable, like somebody can't just be done to a felon.
Right. We already have a system for that.
Okay. We're not going to engage in debate right now. This resolution is going to be referred possibly at the end of this meeting to a committee meeting on Thursday. So if you have... If you want to have debate on it, come back on Thursday. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So we're going to continue on with the public participation. If there's any members of the audience that want to participate, you can go to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi. I am not a speaker. I'm a writer, but I'll do my best. Good evening. My name's Lisa Miller, and I live at 800 Roger Street. I can't believe I'm missing Jeopardy tonight at the county meeting, but sometimes you have to do what you have to do. And I'm not running for any office. I will make this quick. I think our U.S. Constitution and its amendments are just fine, and Ucires does not need to augment or supplement them with this sanctuary city proposal. Being the liberal snowflake that I am, I fear I was missing something from the video that Mr. Finkhauser posted about the proposal. So I asked a person who's a registered Republican and who has numerous guns in her home what they thought of this proposal, because I wanted it from the other side. And she found it ludicrous. And then my husband and I were looking to see which Ohio counties have designated themselves Second Amendment sanctuary counties. And while we were doing that, we saw that the executive directors of both the Ohio Gun Owners and the Buckeye Firearms Association are not on board with this. And I would like to know how Sheriff Ken and Chief Kepke feel about the proposal, and maybe Ucires and Crawford County should not rush into this either. So my thought is that surely you are a brand-new council, a brand-new council president, that you have other issues to focus on, like the commissioner candidates mentioned, growing our tax base, increasing the higher education rate of our young people, and combating opioid addiction. And while we're here chatting about this, crossline, our neighbor to the east is preparing to hold a community meeting about moving forward through cooperative efforts. We, on the other hand, seem bent on some kind of wild west theme. If this resolution comes to the council floor, I ask that you reject it. So thank you.
Hi. Jenny Vermillion, 515 Hill Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would merely like to take this time to remind council that they are elected in a form of government established for the first time in history in 1776. We are a representative form of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. We all know that at the federal level, this type of representation is questionable due to special interest lobbyists who seek preferential treatment and consideration beyond the will of people. I ask that each of you consider your elected position, the people you represent, and cast your votes according to the will of the people, not the will of an individual, yourself, or a lobbyist. Thank you.
Any other public speaker?
Hi. Hi. I'm Deb Pinion, 501 West Charles Street. Excuse me, I have the same thing that half of Ucires has. And we're spreading it around on the microphone. I just mainly wanted to say, to what Lisa had to say, ditto. I got my first gun when I was eight years old. Used to go hunting with my dad. Wonderful memories. But somewhere along the line, I decided that rabbit meat didn't taste that good, and grocery stores were pretty convenient. As far as other weapons, handguns, I can tell you that we brought four family members to handguns in our family. So I'm pretty passionate about that. I'm wearing a shirt from Stoneman-Dyckes High School. I made a donation to their students after the tragedy there. I'm a member of the Sandy Hook Promise. I can't believe that after they killed all those little children, after he killed all those little children, we did absolutely nothing, except thoughts and prayers. So I ask you tonight for thoughts and prayers, for a wise decision on your part. I'm not... I don't want to take your guns. I don't believe you need automatic weapons unless you want to... If you want those, you can join one of the armed forces. But I respectfully ask, as Lisa did, that you table this matter and give it much, much consideration. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Dan Wireball, 1092 Mark Avenue. A recent Facebook post has declared that a resolution would be introduced tonight to protect our Second Amendment rights. I would just like to address that. First, I'm a little concerned that at the new city council's first full meeting, that something like this would be presented. Many of you have campaigned on high utility rates, derelict buildings, and the lack of good-paying jobs. You have a multimillion-dollar sewer separation project going on, a swimming pool that has been out of service for nearly two years, ODNR, and the state attorney general on your back bought the Pines Reservoir. In a year, you'll need to decide if the city will continue with the Central Joint Ambulance District, go on their own, or create something new. Has anyone got input from the schools, law enforcement, health department, mental health agencies, the voters that put you in those chairs? Do you have any statistics that prove this would make anyone safer? How will it affect sporting events, music programs, pancake breakfasts? Some of you may not realize that the recent city council now has a police officer at the meetings and a metal detector precipitated from a credible threat a couple of years ago. Would this resolution allow guns at City Hall and the county courthouse? Just today, the Telegraph Forum is reporting, in the paper today, Telegraph Forum is reporting that suicides in Crawford County have doubled from last year. We have created a suicide prevention coalition as a tool to fight this epidemic. Now, would this resolution create a tool to assist these troubled individuals to carry out their plan? Do you realize that last year, the Ohio Department of Health reported suicide deaths increased by 45% among Ohioans, 56% among known people, 10 to 24, from 2007 to 2018? Over the past dozen years, 18,391 Ohioans has died by suicide. That's over 150% of the population of Ucires, over half those suicides nationwide and home with guns. And in Ohio, 13,000 people, the population of our town, have been killed in the past decade, either by homicide-suicide accident using a firearm. Pew Research poll of U.S. adults from September 3rd to 15th, 2019, shows 88% still current gun laws are strict enough or could even be stricter. In another poll from September last year, 89% of Americans supported gun legislation that increased mental health funding. 83% supported required background checks. 72% favored a national red flag law. And the same supported a license before a gun purchase. These are the same things the Virginia legislature has proposed that resulted in the gun rally this past weekend. They're also proposing prohibiting an unlicensed gun dealer from purchasing more than one handgun in a 30-day period and authorizing any locality to prohibit the possession of firearms and ammunition in public spaces during permitted events, say the Sars Bratwurst Festival, the fair, first Fridays. Have you read the legislation? Nowhere was it proposed that someone would have the right to take a gun. They seem like sensible actions to prevent senseless deaths or injuries. Don't get me wrong, I support responsible gun ownership and the Second Amendment, but you know what? Sometimes it takes laws, metal detectors, and police officers to make us safe. And just because it sounds good, and it's on TV, or the internet, or it's the American thing to do, doesn't mean it's good for our community. There are absolutely no reliable studies that prove guns make us safer. Please do some research, ask some questions, be a responsible elected official.
Here we go. I'm Robert Taylor. I live at 411 Plum Street, Fairwood, Iowa. I don't speak in Trump's people. I'll just touch on what Dan said. There are a bunch of people at Texas Church that totally disagree with you that guns are going to make people safer. Just happened a few weeks ago, a guy shot a guy, one shot, one shot in the head, and the mass shooter, the guy had a shotgun. Anybody that's ever been in the military understands that a shotgun would do more damage in this room than a rifle, a machine gun. A shotgun, you don't miss. So it's not a gun issue, it's a people issue. Seventeen years old, I took an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution against all enemies foreign and domestic. How many of you folks swore an oath to the Constitution? Raise your hand. As elected official, not just a few of you, as elected official, did you swear an oath to the Constitution? Put your hand down if you think you're not expected to uphold it. You are expected to uphold the Constitution, and the Second Amendment is plain as day. I have a four-foot-nine, 120-pound daughter. She's 18 years old. Because of restrictions, because we're scared of guns, she can't defend herself. Cops can't be where she's at all the time. God forbid anything ever happened to her, because then the iota falls on me as her dad to protect her. I taught her to shoot. When she turns 21, she'll follow the law and get her concealed carry permit, because I know that's the safest thing for her. She's four-foot-nine and 120 pounds. I don't understand why anyone who took an oath to the Constitution would not uphold it regardless of what the federal government or the state government is saying. We talk about the federal government getting involved in things and messing up all the time, the gas can, pipe rack. Federal government's not the answer. Big government's not the answer. People have the right to defend themselves, not through the government, through God. That's given to us. The Constitution installs it out that the government can't infringe on it. And I expect our elected officials in my local community to uphold that. We know the federal government's not going to. They've already proven they don't care about our constitutional rights. Mike DeWine, he's not a Republican, he's not a conservative, he's a liberal. He's basing things on emotion. And I just... I don't understand why we're even having this debate. I would expect local people to understand that. That's really all I got to say. I know where I stand on it, and I expect you people to sit beside us, both.
Any other speakers?
Bill Spucker, 205 North Spring Street. Just want to say that violence does not occur because of the accessibility of firearms. It occurs because of the mental state of a person. If firearms are not accessible to a person who intends to do violence, they will use any other means that they have, a knife, a ball bat, a piece of pipe, a rock. How are you possibly going to keep somebody of that nature from picking up a rock out of your yard and using it on somebody else? I strongly recommend this resolution for Second Amendment sanctuary county and city. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Hearing none, we will move on to communications and petitions.
We have one communication. This is directed to the City Council, January 15th, 2020, from the South Commission. Dear Public Lands and Villages Committee, the South Commission, May 14th, 2020, as the amendment of the Public Lands and Villages Committee amend, up by the ordinance number ordinance number three five one point one four, to this name one parking space in City Park lot number six, for an electric vehicle charging station with a two-hour limit, and that can be accessed twenty-four hours a day, Sunday to week, considering Jeffrey Reacher, Mayor, and Commissions Chairman, and that does have to be referred to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
So moved. I moved, did she second it?
It's been moved by Mr. Pope, seconded by Mr. Pope.
Oh, also.
For this, also to refer that to traffic for our Public Lands and Buildings.
Aye.
Does any of the councilors have any questions on any of the amendments from the committee meetings on January ninth, or you want to speak on it? The traffic commission, Mr. Reacher. We do not have any, anything to report on amendments now?
Wait a minute, hang on a minute.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, I'm sorry.
You want me to read those, or you just want to?
Yeah, because we were on here.
Okay, so that meeting was, probably December, it was just approved. It was on December sixth, and President Plur, Mr. Wagner, Captain Sartal, and Captain Ostenheimer. And Mr. Wagner made a motion, seconded by, Mr. Captain Ostenheimer, to approve the amendments from September second, September sixth meeting in the past. The old business, we have voting members in the traffic commission, we tabled at the last meeting to add the service foreman as a voting member. Ostenheimer made a motion, signed by Wagner, sent one out to help and safety, and made a recommendation, codified ordinance three oh seven point zero one, commission established members, that the service foreman or his designated will be included as voting members of the traffic commission, and it should pass. In the new business, South Lane East Rensselaer, House and Minor, will authorize the traffic commission, a letter asks the traffic commission to return, to consider returning the intersection back to a four-way stop, because of the increased accidents, including a few roll accidents in the past years. And Captain Ostenheimer and Sartal agreed with the suggestion, added that it is difficult to see westbound on East Rensselaer, and added benefit for the children crossing to and from school. Ostenheimer made a motion, seconded by Sartal, to conduct a ninety-day trial on a four-way stop at South Lane and East Rensselaer, and that motion passed. We have the charging station, parking lot six, council passed legislation for the charging station, and made a referral to the traffic commission. Ostenheimer made a motion, seconded by Sartal, to send a letter to Public Lands and Buildings that will designate a specific space for the electric vehicle charging station with a two-hour limit, and this will amend this current city parking ordinance, that motion also passed. On Slaughter Avenue, the police department has had some issues with parking, that does not allow a local business to take a delivery and a pickup. Law Director Rob Ratliff led a police report from the last delivery incident, after some questions from the, from Ratliff and Ostenheimer, Herb Klein of Ryder-Hyle Brons Incorporated, one twenty-six Slaughter Avenue, and Connie Casero, the one twenty-four Slaughter Avenue, have agreed that Mr. Klein will give Ms. Casero a certified letter notifying her of a three-day notice of the hop or pickup delivery at Ryder-Hyle Brons to allot her time to make sure there are no vehicles for her residency parked out in front of that name. Mr. Klein also will notify the police department that city administration's saying, the PD will post a temporary no parking sign the night before, and will remove that the evening of the pickup slash delivery. This will be a trial basis before any traffic control amendments would be suggested. A resident on Oakwood Avenue, that would be East Oakwood Avenue, is concerned about the visibility of the intersection of East Street at Eastwood, Southeast Street at East Oakwood because of parked cars on Eastwood. We would like the traffic commission to consider limiting the parking on East Oakwood, or to create a four-way stop intersection. Jeff Dunn had measured all of the yellow curb markings and everything measured correctly. The area will be remainted in the spring. Captain Ostenheimer and Sartal agreed that there were no issues getting the safety vehicles through the area. Dunn did not have any reports of the government's trucks, and had the issue that being through the area either. Also, North Wallen Street is the next out-of-order business, a resident requesting that the traffic commission consider making the intersection of North Wallen and East Perry a four-way stop, because it is difficult to access, this is a state route and cannot be restricted, especially at a curb. High Street, a resident requesting that the traffic commission consider no parking on the east side of High Street, because there are no parking restrictions in the TCM, that's the traffic control map, and the street is narrow for the safety vehicles and the government's trucks to pass with car park on both sides of the street. The traffic commission tabled the item until they could visit the area and be able to discuss it at the next traffic commission meeting. One one oh two Willard, the resident has been issued a notice of violation for placing parking blocks on the Ryder Lane. Mr. Wagner has extended the notice until a solution can be filed. The traffic commission decided to contact the property owner, to see if trees would be acceptable, no parking solution. Item was tabled until the next meeting. Plantway, Captain Sartal required about the tree lawn area of Plantway being designated as an emergency parking only area. This item was tabled until the next meeting. Sartal made a motion, seconded by Ostenheimer, to defer it to one point eight, and the motion passed. Need motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports, electorally? Second. So moved by Mr. Keever, seconded by Mr. Meyer, all of the committees say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. And report of city officers, Mr. Mayor.
I have no formal presentation tonight, Mr. President, except to say that tonight you see democracy in progress, and this goes back to, I think, any, any, of seventeen seventy-six, or somebody, no? You know, since our country was formed, Bussaras, eighteen twenty-one, and, you know, there's been a lot of debate that goes over the years, and it's, it's, it's good to see everybody here, and I think we had a very civil debate tonight, and hope it continues. That's all I have to say.
And is there a safety service draft?
I have a safety service draft. Yes, there's a referral. The first thing, Jeff would like to refer manpower and bill to finance committee, and he would like to refer an invoice from the McFarlane Trailer Park demolition to finance committee, and he would also like to refer the ultraviolet system for the wastewater treatment plant to service and finance committee. Civil service, we have started the process to do a civil service test for the next fire chief. We have sent out a request for qualifications, also known as RFQs, for engineering services last week and this week also. Information can be found on our website, and the deadlines of submit an RFQ is February twenty-fourth. Jeff gives a saying to Council President, Mr. Fankhouser, for setting up Bussaras Live for Access TV. This site is available on any smartphone or device, and our residents are able to see what is on Access. Gary has been sick, he's been out sick for a few days, and so, as soon as he gets back, he'll be back hopefully next week, and we'll have everything ready to go. Highland Avenue, we had a broken sewer line, caused Highland Avenue from East Mansfield Street to Warner Street to be closed today for repairs. I know it's now open, there's a, we need a new manhole, we had some issues with it, with a steel plate put over that right now, so, the road is open, but the repair is not complete, will be completed pretty soon. Sunday starts, we'll need to sign up, so it's got an exciting time, a sure sign of spring, when the kids come and start signing up, and, spring is hopefully just around the corner, and Todd has the schedule for it, don't you don't have?
I have it.
Okay, you have been implicated in this, Mr. Mayor. Todd does not have the schedule, but checked with, checked back on our, we'll simply find it, we'll put it on our website. Gary and Jeff will be attending the Safety Council Conference in Columbus in March. We spaled out Spencer Road water service information last week, they would have had, should have had it Saturday, and we have actually started getting some calls already, so, so we're very encouraged the first few days, so we, we let them know we needed a certain amount of people to sign up to be able to afford to do it, so, so far, so good, but.
That's good.
We have, we have, we have, what?
Mark and Ben.
Yeah, I have several members who live on that drive, who I work with, and they're very excited, so. Great. Dirt Dog, there are contractors on Group Two, Wedston area, and they're finishing up, and the Group One is gonna start after, we have, there'll be a public meeting, well, before we start that, so let everybody know, we haven't set the date yet for that. Before they start, we will advertise, everyone in that area will get a notice of a public meeting, so. Our storm separation project is moving along, and it has also been very encouraging so far. That's all for tonight.
Okay, so we have several referrals, we need to vote on, for the committee. Yeah, we have the manpower vote for finance, we need a motion, seconded for that.
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pope, seconded by Mr. Keever, all in favor, if they say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And then, McFarlane Trailer Park, to finance?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Pope, seconded by Mr. Keever, if it doesn't, finance hold.
U D Systems already in service, had this discussion.
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pope. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Also, the, well, Mr. Meyer did the day part in the.
Yep. And then, the law director's report. Referral report? Y'all heard, here report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a couple of referrals. I would like to refer legislation to allow me to pay a bill to Buckeye Excavating and Construction for work completed on the East Mansfield and Wedston Street storm improvement project. The money's already appropriated and in place, but a purchase order was not written ahead of the project being started. And this one's on me, because there was so much going on, and I thought it was going through our interest-free loan, through O W D A, and in fact, it still shows on our website, it's not complete, but apparently they denied it, and, yeah, so, we need to pay for this. And like I said, the money's already in place, but I do need the legislation, because the purchase order wasn't written ahead of the project starting, so. And then, I also need to refer an appropriation in the Water Works Replacement Fund, and the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. This is for a change order and the demolition of the old water filtration plant. Apparently, when they were finishing the things up, or, you know, when they were digging and getting ready to cover everything, they found an original foundation from the original plant that they had to dig out. Oh, unexpected, they didn't, no one knew it was there, and they couldn't just fill it in, because it was too high and it was gonna be sticking out of the ground. So, this is not covered by our loan from O W D A, so we need to, it needs to be paid, this change order needs to be paid from our funds, so, the rest of it will go through O W D A.
So I need a motion to refer all of those to the finance committee?
So moved, second.
No, aye. This also, seconded by Mr. Pope, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
And one other item, which is just a reminder, and I believe it's in economic development, we need to appoint an income tax appeals board, and, like I say, it's already in committee. The law director told me today he'll explain that process at the committee meeting, so, just a reminder, we need to get one in place.
We're good.
That's all I have, thank you.
And I want to get a motion to accept and file the order statement attached to the petition, it's dated December thirty first, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
I said.
Moved by Mr. Pope, seconded by.
They kind of both say aye.
Yeah.
So you picked. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're gonna try to get before, police chief's not here, fire chief's not here.
Mr. President, police chief sent me a text, he said they had a drug bust tonight on High Street, seven people were arrested.
Awesome.
And they, it was also methamphetamine, and so, kudos to our police department, so, that's breaking news.
I need a motion to accept all the city officers.
So moved, second.
The new one is from Keever, selected by Myers, who's up with the office in Florida, and David, in LA.
Aye.
And we go for all of them. Visitors input regarding your force of standing or special committees of the city officers, is there any visitors input on any of the reports that were just? There are none.
Yes, please, Kurt.
Any requests?
He does. Five minutes.
Four-minute date.
Three minutes.
Five minutes.
She's got a special.
All the, we had the four-way stop at eight oh eight, PM, or eight thirteen PM. Consideration of supposed legislation for the third time.
We have a two-day-long legislation, ordinance number two, twenty twenty, and then even supplementing ordinance number sixty by twenty nineteen, being the annual percreation ordinance for twenty twenty, by appropriating from unappropriated sewage disposal funds, the sums of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars to the contractual services line item, and sixty-four thousand one hundred dollars to the capital outlay line item, with both client items being within these sewage disposal operations, and in this category, within the sewage disposal subparadigm, and carrying an emergency event, as referred back to the finance committee. Resolution number two oh two, twenty twenty, pursuant to Bussaras codified ordinance one one four one twenty three, Bussaras City Council hereby appoints Harry Lipscomb, President residing at five four nine Socks and Ness Camp in Bussaras, Ohio, to a four-year term, and Michael Keever, President residing at eight three three South Poplar Street, Bussaras, Ohio, to two two-year terms, two two-year terms, as members of the ordinance of the appeals, commencing retroactive to January one, twenty twenty, through December three, one, twenty twenty-three, and pursuant to Bussaras codified ordinance one three one nine point ten, as members of the ordinance doing appeals, Harry Lipscomb is hereby appointed to a four-year term, and Michael Keever is appointed to a two-year term, to the Board of Building Standards and Appeals. And on behalf of the citizens of the city, Bussaras, council hereby authorizes the City Council Health and Safety Committee Chairperson and Council President to two-year terms as representatives of the city of Bussaras to the Central Joint Endowment District Board of Trustees, and carrying an emergency, that is referred back to the economic development.
Need a motion to accept those as per reading?
So moved, second.
It's been made a motion by Mr. Keever, seconded by Mr. Myers, all of the favors, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Consideration of supposed legislation for the third time.
Ordinance number sixty one, twenty nineteen, I will read through section one, and then even supplementing section one two nine point zero one one, entitled residency of chapter one two nine, entitled department of public service safety, part one, entitled administrative code of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio. Now, this will be in order, James, by the council of the city of Bussaras, state of Ohio, in jury of all members elected there to concur. Section one, with section one two nine point zero one one, entitled residency of chapter one two nine, entitled department of public service safety of public one, entitled administrative code of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, being the same hereby as admitted and supplemented, to read as follows, to read, one two nine point zero one one, residency. The director of public service, shot established his residency within a five mile radius of the city limits, within six months after his appointment, ordinance twenty three nine zero zero passed April four of two thousand. And that has already been referred to me, so we just need to accept it as a per reading.
Uh, the motion accepted as a per reading?
So moved.
Second. It's been changed, motion by Mr. Pope, seconded by Mr. Myers, all of the favors, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And we have public participation on any of the legislation that was just read, if you want to speak on those issues, please come and vote, you understand, name and address.
Hi, Melanie Evans, nine fifteen Southeast Street, I've been here before. Want to again, kind of reiterate something that Jennifer Miliyan said, and that when you were elected, you were voted on by the people of the city of Bussaras, and that, you know, the people of the city you know, the people of the city are, are being boisterous about this issue, and so when you go to vote, remember that you are voting for the people that elected you, or as I like how someone said, the people that hired you. You are paid to do this job and they hired you to do this job. So when you go to vote, um, you know, remember that Mr. Wagner had lived in the city, he owned a home in the city, chose to purchase a home that is outside the three-mile radius, knew what the law and the ordinance said, are purchasing the home. Now the mayor's come to you all wanting you to change that so that, you know, Mr. Wagner can still continue to do his job, but that so supposedly as well that he can find an acceptable candidate. Well, I mean, I think there's a room full of people that are here, and I'm sure at least one of these individuals in here might be an acceptable candidate to be the next City Service Director. I mean, we are a community of 12,000. Um, the mayor does go and speak to the school and ask, um, somebody, one of the, the individuals had said about getting the youth to stay in the city and to be a resident of the city, you know? And honestly, the ordinance ought to say that the person should live inside the city limits, not even three miles outside the city limits. This person is, so to speak, a right-hand to our mayor, and he doesn't live here. Um, why shouldn't that person live in our city? Why shouldn't their, you know, money be here? Why shouldn't they be paying our exorbitantly high water rates? You know? We need to look at that. We want to keep the youth here, but we're okay with our city jobs and the people that, you know, and this has been voted on a long time, it's been in as an ordinance, as it's current state for over 19 years. Now we want to change it because Mr. Wagner bought a home outside the three-mile radius. Um, he can own that home for as long as he wants to, as long as he's not living there. So my thing of it is, why do we, why do we really need to change this? So when you go to vote, remember, you're not voting just for how you feel, you're voting how the residents of the city feel. So remember that before you go to vote tonight, that you were elected by the people, for the people. So, thank you.
And visitor input. Hearing done, uh, committee reports on pending legislation. Pending legislation, Finance Committee.
Yes, Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance 2-2020 appropriations.
And Economic Development Committee, Mr. President?
Favorable to resolution 202-20 Subcommittee Appointments.
I need a motion to accept those reports.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Vogt, seconded by Mr. Shreveau, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Further consideration of pending legislation, ordinance 2, for the second reading of ordinance 2-2020. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rule? Waited reading of the caption and text, considered.
So moved. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Keever?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Vogt?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2, 2020.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 2, 2020?
So moved. Second.
Vogt?
Yes.
McKibber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Gocon?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance 2-2020 is duly adopted. And on your agenda, there's a typo, the next one, 2-2, but should not be 2019, it should be 2020.
That's correct.
Okay, it's just on my agenda. For the second reading of ordinance 283-2020, do I hear a motion to suspend the rule, wait the reading, and action tags on declared and read. So moved.
McKibber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Gocon?
Yes.
Vogt?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Resolution number 202, 2020.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 202, 2020?
So moved. Second.
Vogt?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Gocon?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKibber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Ordinance number 202, 2020 is duly adopted. And then I need a motion to adopt ordinance 61-2019, which is the safety service residency.
So moved. Second.
Vogt?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Gocon?
Yes.
All set?
How?
McKibber?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
No.
Ordinance number 61-2019, passes on a 4-3 vote. Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business? New miscellaneous business, uh, we're already told the access channel is back on the air on live version only.
Is that just Cyrus.live? There's no dot com or anything?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, there is a issue that Mr. Hess had to be resetting it every day in the morning, and he has been out for the last two days, so we're going to try to get in his office and get it back online here, but, um...
I just wanted to make sure, because I was telling somebody and they were like, we'll just have a dot com. I'm like, oh, all right.
You want to refer to future legislation, I need, um, the same issue, uh, if you want to refer that, then your motion is seconded.
Okay, uh, the Strong Ohio Bill in Sacramento Sanctuary City, which is not currently in committee, we would need a motion to put that in committee. And it would go into the Health and Safety Committee, so does anybody want to make a motion to put that in committee? There's no motion, so it's not going to be in committee. And we have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on January 28th at 4:00 PM in council chambers, and also directly after that, 4:30, there's a Board of Building Standards and Appeals meeting. And there's no council members absent, so we have to, uh, uh, then all, joint, joint regular committee meetings, order rolls for this council meeting, can any open society that has invited, make it disco, during the committee meeting, this time Thursday, I think it's a lot, sorry.
The, um, the first two bits we had here from the Sherwin program, if we do wish to discuss that, either Thursday or more likely when we can get those people back to it and talk about it, that does need to be referred to the books.
So do we have a motion to put the Sherwin Utility Protection into the Service Committee?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Myers, seconded by Mr. Vogt, put that in committee, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
So we have, um, we have eight new referrals, we have the, um, AEP parking space for, for the electric vehicle trucking station, that is in public plants and buildings for traffic. Uh, we have the appropriation from joints, the auditor, that is to finance. We have the authorization to, uh, pay your, the one-out order disorder, that's in finance from the auditor. We have the UE, um, equipment of the wastewater treatment plant that, um, is the Service Safety Director that's already in service and it has been referred to finance. Uh, the employing manpower has been referred to, uh, finance for the Service Safety Director, we will not be talking about that on Thursday. We have the billlet, uh, from finance, uh, to finance and Service Safety Director that will be on the agenda for Thursday, several changes to the billis here. We have the, uh, invoice for the McFarlane Trailer Park, the former McFarlane Trailer Park, that's for finance, we need Service Safety Director. We have the Sherwin program, um, that is from council to the Service Committee that will likely not be on the agenda for Thursday. Already in committee and on the agenda for Thursday, we have the various Subcommittee Appointments that we do need to get addressed, uh, that do not require legislation, that's in Economic Development, we, and let's always mention as well as that, that tax board. We have the, uh, fire lines, let's say we have 70 ordinances, uh, local that need to be amended to, uh, taking account of the state's, uh, ordinance that has become law, that is in Health and Safety. We have the East Mansfield, uh, Street Rezoning Propulsion, that is in Biden, that's the function of the legislature we had last week. We have the Ad Hop Committee on Council Rules of Procedure, um, we can put that on the agenda for Thursday. I do not have at this point the, uh, recycling or the, uh, the dumpsters and the city parking lots on the agenda because we are voting for Thursday. Uh, it is open hearing, it's a regular meeting, everyone wants to bring it up, they're free to do so, but I don't have it on the agenda at this time. If anyone else has anything else they want to add, let me know by the phone tomorrow morning, and that's all we have.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Keever, seconded by Mr. Myers, all in favor of say aye.
They're showing this.
All opposed. Meeting adjourned at 8:00 or 8:10? 8:00?